Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays. I'd like to call to order the regular council meeting of the City of Satellite Beach, December 19th, 2012, approximately 7 o'clock. Will you please rise for a moment aside on the pledge led by Vice Mayor Bryner?
Steve Headley, Regent.
I have two things. of dimensions and we are loading huge pictures in terms of kilobytes. To load the city's website literally takes over 10 megabytes of download, which is a drain on the server. The small pictures, for instance, the Twilight Santa one is almost a meg in size and it's literally shouldn't be more than 30 kilobytes. If somebody -- I don't know how that would work. I can optimize the pictures for you and send them to you. I'll be happy to do that, but that needs to be looked at because it is a drain on the servers. Secondly, two Fridays ago, I could not breathe, literally. Hopped on my bike and rode down to the fire department where I was met by two paramedics, Chief Don Hughes, and the first thing they said was, "Sit down, you stupid idiot." They hooked me up to four leads to check everything out, and then they said the worst thing of, "You know, let's hook him up to 12 leads." So now I'm thinking, oh, great, I'm going to die, and three things pass before my eyes. One, who's going to tell my mom? Two, who's going to handle my graphic business? I have a client in Denver. And three, do I have on clean underwear? Eventually, though, they got me set up, and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge the fire department and their quick response. It was nice. I was a bit of a nervous Nellie, but I do appreciate their attention to me, and it was really good just to be able to stop in and say, "Hey, can you see if I'm okay?"
Any other citizens' comments? That's a non-agenda item. Here are none. Closed the citizens' comment. Agenda item number four, city council comments. Councilman Dean, would you like to start?
First of all, I think you all know that I have two youngsters. One is in grade school and one is in middle school, so my heart and thoughts go out to this folks. I'm sorry. I think you all know that I have two young children. One is in elementary school and one's in grade school, and my heart and prayers go out to those folks in Connecticut due to the tragic loss they suffered last week. It's unimaginable to me what it must be like for them. I also attended Carol Carlson's memorial on Saturday. They are a remarkable family. I just wanted to let everybody know that her memorial was Saturday and I got to spend some time with the siblings or the children that I didn't get to know very well over the past few years and really enjoyed their company. Congratulations, or as I called chief, congratulations or condolences, not sure, should Chief Pearson pronounce, I'm not sure if I call you chief or city manager, and also congratulations to Commander Hodge, who's now chief, so. And then that's it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Goode?
I have nothing. Except this.
That doesn't sound good at all, okay. I had a chance to attend the Sampson's Island Park Committee regular meeting last night. One of the things that's going to come before council on the January 9th meeting is the issue regarding the boat and the motor. They have been looking at -- the brief history on it that I got last night was the boat typically lasts 20 years and the motor lasts 10. Well, they found a boat that's 10 years old and they're looking for a new motor. That's kind of where this is at. But it's kind of reached the point where it's critical mass. The boat is just no longer usable. It's really beyond salvage capability. So they are going to come to us on January 9th and ask for some thoughts on where we go with this process. They also have two board openings, and so they are desperately in need of some new blood on the board and one alternate. And any volunteers that would like to participate, they're going to have a spring open house in March. I believe it's March 9th, which is going to be a really nice event, and that's why this vote is such a critical thing, is to be able to get people out there. The last thing that I heard at the meeting last night is we need to sit closer so that we can talk into our microphones because a lot of our people out in the audience cannot hear us. So I know I'm guilty of that, a lot. I sit back, but people can't hear us up here, so if we can sit closer to our microphones, that would be appreciated. That's all I have. Thank you. I also attended the Carlsons on -- I did the Sunday one, though, and really a great family, a lot of people from the city there, and very, very nice. Also concerning what happened up north, I talked to our acting chief, and our city's already becoming proactive in it. They've picked up their coverage of the school. Our officers now on their shifts are mandated to make rounds in the school, so our presence are going to be picked up in the schools around here. So that's all I have to say.
I have nothing to report this evening.
All right. Good. Okay, acting city manager. Jeff, thank you for all your work this week and your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. The applications for the city council seat have been in, and they should be copies of them at your desk. I believe there are seven total that have received. The agenda has been put out for tomorrow night's 6:00 meeting. The Cassia Project, Massey Corporation is working to install the pavers, and the anticipated completion date will be the end of this month. As I'm sure we've all noticed that some of the paving has already started, so that seems to be rapidly coming to a close, which would be nice. There has been mentioned in the past about a stormwater workshop, and we are prepared -- Alan Potter's prepared to give that update. We just need to come up with a date for this and something else for a special meeting or a workshop, or however you want to do that in order to get, as they say, up to speed on the stormwater issues. So we'll be looking for some dates potentially to put that together in January. The request for proposal for the executive search firm, that's an agenda item, so we can just tackle that when it gets here. Basically, the same thing on the stormwater workshop is the IAFF, the firefighter negotiations. I talked to our HR attorney, and he strongly recommended that he come in and we hold a shade meeting for him to give updates to the current council on the progress so far and where they're going, just to confirm that the direction either has changed, isn't changed, or whatever the direction might be. And he just feels that it's important to get everybody up to speed, and that way we know where we're going and can go forward.
What does shade meeting is?
Shade meeting, meaning that, from the way I understand it, is the meeting is noticed, it's public, it's opened publicly, but then if there's public people here, they're asked to leave, and then the meeting is closed, and only the only people that are in the shade meeting are the council and the HR attorney. And I think in that particular situation, I think that's it, but I will confirm who else would be present other than the council here.
Is shade an acronym for something?
I don't think so. I think it just means not out.
Not public.
Correct. Correct. And the court reporter. The Michael P. Karate sign is, it's done, it's completed, it's permitted, everything's ready. It's just the company's backlog, and they're just, they've got it on the schedule. It's just as soon as they can get to it, they're going to install it, and it'll be done. The FOP contract, Fraternal Order of Police contract, has expired with the city. It isn't a significant issue in the fact that there are multiple provisions in state laws out there that say that if a contract expires, it just remains in effect until the next one is negotiated. The reason I bring this up is just so that, again, that's another contract that we want to start thinking about a date to consider. I would suggest we maybe start, but probably when the new city manager gets here might be the best way to handle that, assuming that that timeframe works with the FOP as well, which I think it should, depending on we get somebody here. But it's just something to be considered in the back of your mind. The fire department has a CAD interface project that they've been working on, which is for computer-rated dispatch, and what that does is it interfaces or links the system, and it's a computer enhancement. It's almost like what a police records management system or CAD system would be, and it links up with our system, and it's a $50 to $60 a month kind of a quick fix to kind of assist the fire department. And it's really spectacular what it will do for that little amount of money, and it just increases their presence, it increases their response, and their communication with dispatch, and I got to see it work, and it's pretty good. So they're excited about that. It's got the mapping and computer technology and things in there that's really helpful and beneficial to them and for the dispatch. Also, the Toys for Tots and Satellite Cares, the participation is once again taking place for those two programs to assist families in need during the Christmas season, and if anybody has any more information or would like any more information on how to participate, they can contact the fire department or check the fire department's website as far as for collection points and what they're looking for. And finally, the recreation department has a new hire, Casey Hanson, and she will be replacing the program specialist, Lee Stevenson, who is retiring this month. And I met her, a very nice lady with an outstanding background, and I think she'll do real well. We're excited to have her.
Background in recreation?
Yes. She came from the Chamber of Commerce, actually, so she's got a lot of the program management, that type of background, so. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Jeff, how long do you think stormwater, the workshop, they're going to need, time-wise?
Two hours, I believe, would be Alan Potter's preference to.
And what do you think on shade? I guess my point is, can just be done same night, start a little half hour earlier and get both of them in?
They both indicated that two hours would be a reasonable time. They didn't expect unless something unusual, or a lot of questions happened, it wouldn't probably be longer than that. So the indication I got from both Alan Potter and Wayne Helsby would be about two hours would be appropriate for both.
What's the council's wishes? One night or two separate ones?
I can throw one if we can do it.
Our next meeting is, we have a third special meeting. We have the ninth council and the 23rd council.
Correct.
So any dates people can't make it? Would you like to get them down?
January's open, so.
Maybe the week of the 14th of January in there? Let me check with the date there and see when Alan and Tillman's available. Are they available on our asking?
I believe they're pretty much going to be available. I wouldn't mind maybe getting two dates and just so we can check with them, but.
15 through 16? That's basically the cities. 15 through 16? Is that okay with the rest of council? Okay. You check into that and see which one is best, and we'll get them going.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Number eight. 2013 community meetings, town hall meetings, the state of the city. Do I have any dates in particular they'd like to start off?
I'd like to ask a couple of questions. First of all, I see us with just five. Can you all hear me? I see us planning just five meetings, and I'm wondering why there isn't one each month? It's still only a couple of meetings in an entire year for each of us. You know, if the idea is to communicate with our residents in a town hall setting, then it seems to me we could handle once a month. I mean, one each month.
One each month? Okay. Any other suggestions for every other month? I mean, is there enough for every month? Ryan, obviously, you feel there -- excuse me, I'm sorry. Obviously, you feel there is?
I think that we have to play it by year. You know, it may wind up being that there's no interest ultimately, in which case we stop them for a while.
All right. Who would like to start off?
I will.
Thank you. So you're in January, and you'll arrange it with? And since you're doing it, you can pick the date?
I'll get with Jeff. I'm a said chief, Jeff.
February? I'll do it.
I'll take March.
I'll do April. My boy should be back by then.
We'll give May to whomever are new. And then we'll be back to the top?
Yeah.
And start it over?
Yep.
Sounds great.
Well, let's go through it. Councilman Dean would have.
June?
June.
I'll have July.
I got August.
Mark has August.
September.
Ryan has September. New has October. And November will be?
Councilman Dean.
Dean again.
And then you.
September will be.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion on that? I'll open it up for public comment. Here are none. We're back to council. So then we'll move on to agenda item number nine, discuss, take action on the auditor selection committee by Ron Gygoudis. Ron, please. Ron, if you feel more comfortable, if you're going to be there for a while and you want to use the seat, and that might feel free.
Good evening, council and citizens. Basically, brought forward, was asked to present a synopsis of everything related to the start of the auditing committee, when it started. It is in the agenda packet, and basically a progress report of what we've done to date. We did have a meeting this past Monday. That's not reflected in the agenda packet, but I will update everyone on that. Just to give everyone a brief forward on this, on August 1st, 2012, council was presented information by the city's finance director, Brenda Raver, related to the procedures and related selection process for professional audit services. My understanding why council was doing that is because the contract and the option years were approaching the end for the fiscal year ending 12/13, 11/12. And then subsequently, on August 8th, during a council meeting, each council member selected a citizen to serve on this committee. And the people chosen were Mr. Terry Hammond, Mr. Jason Hoppenbauer, Ms. Alice Walden, Mr. Bill Wagner, and myself, Ron Gygoudis. And subsequently, on October 29th, the committee met for the first time, and we basically had an organizational meeting. Brenda Raver presented some backup documentation from the past as far as the RFP request for proposal and the various information related to that, and also an updated draft form for the most current selection process. And based on the statutes, after she presented this organizational information, the committee met, and we basically set up a time for when we're going to meet, minimum once a month, and it's the third Monday of every month. And we also had a discussion on electing a chairman and a vice chairman and related members. And we got to, I, of course, was elected chairman. Mr. Wagner was elected vice chairman. We discussed something at that meeting, and the subsequent meeting that we just had this past Monday, one of the individuals, Mr. Jason Hoppenbauer, is not on the committee, has rescinded from being on the committee. And since there are only four members, we thought it best to bring it for council to see whether you wanted to add an additional person to the committee or not. It is your choice. My understanding is that the committee by statute only requires a minimum of three people, but it's, again, your choice what you want to do with that. I've got a prepared statement that I could read. I'm summarizing now, basically, of what has transpired. I'd like to start at the November 19th, 2012, meeting rather than the past. I think I gave a pretty good synopsis of what we've done at that point. But basically, we outlined a schedule for the selection of auditors and performance of the engagement as follows. January 2013, finalize draft for the RFP and present to city council. February 2013, advertisement for the RFP. March 29th, 2013, submission deadline for RFP responses. April 15th, thereabouts. Approve shortlist and prepare a notification to shortlist candidates. April 30th, 2013, consults and interviews with candidates. May 8th, 2013, approve final ranking of candidates. June 2013, negotiations if needed and present to the city council for approval. These dates are pretty much in line. However, when we had the meeting and updated the minutes, we approved the minutes for this meeting with the caveat that the changes had to be accepted. So these dates, I was working from the draft minutes, but they're basically in line with the months, not the specific dates. In this last meeting, what we addressed was to review the RFP, the auditor selection procedures and proposal for professional services. And we went through the document, the 10 pages of the document, and we filled in the appropriate dates that I just went through. We established that, or we're going to propose, that there's the first year and four additional option years. We came to consensus. And rather than go page by page as far as the update to this, I'd rather wait to present that to council in January, if we may, because we also are going to have a special meeting on January 7th, a Monday, prior to your council meeting, to finalize all the information here and present it to council. One of the things I request the city manager right now, I put in a request, but if the acting city manager could act on this and get us a soft copy, or me directly a soft copy of this document, so that we can incorporate through strike-through process some of the changes we're looking at prior to presenting it to council, and also allow Brenda some time to take a look at some of the numbers that need to change on the budget, numbers in there. And of course, we also had handouts, and it's not clear in my little presentation here that I attached, because, again, those were draft minutes. We did go through 218.391 Florida statute, which is the auditor selection procedures. And that's basically the update at this point.
Thank you. Council, questions?
I have.
Go, please.
My first question is, why? Why are we doing this?
I can answer that question. When I first got on city council, I had requested that it be an agenda item to look at, as you all will do, look at all the contracts that the city has. And it's my understanding that that contract with the auditor has expired.
It's not.
Well, we have an engagement letter. I believe that the original contract has expired. I don't have it in my agenda package. Mr. Beadle, can you answer that question or Jeff?
I don't recall what the timing is in the auditor's contract, off the top of my head.
Let me help you.
And also, due to the transfer of the funds from the CRA to the city, general fund, that was an issue that was not picked up by the auditors, which, you know, they have been picked up, and as most of you know, it's the city's responsibility to procure services at the lowest cost possible. So we thought, although this same firm may end up ultimately with the contract, it's probably best practice to go out for an RFP after, you know, 25 years or so.
The current contract that they're working under says, first, the services we are to provide, the City of Satellite Beach, Florida, for the years ending September 30, 2009, 10, 11, 12, and 13. This is an ongoing contract.
I've never seen the contract, so.
Well, this firm has been working with the city for many years, and they have always provided good service to us. They have been available immediately whenever we've needed them. They haven't charged us extra for extra services that they've provided along the way. This is mid-contract with them, and for us to continue with this process is saying to them, "You're fired." And I don't like Satellite Beach acquiring that kind of business reputation. We have always been a city that other entities enjoyed doing business with because we always operated fairly and above board, and we didn't treat people who served us well in this manner.
Well, I have to tell you, last year, after the audit was complete, we were in the same situation last year, and we were advised that their contract ended once the audit was submitted in March of 2012. So I would like to, if you have the contract, I would like the city council to take a look at it, because it's my understanding that the contract had expired and there was a letter of engagement that continued their services through 2012 only.
Excuse me. If I heard correctly, and it's been a while, I think it related, and I could be wrong, it's worked through 2013, but for the fiscal year ending 2012. If I heard that correctly in the past, I'm not sure. If you're looking at the contract, certainly fiscal 2012 ended, so they have worked through 2013 to complete the contract. I'm not. We were just asked to appoint it and select it to the committee.
And I don't know, and this is probably a legal question, under Florida statute 218, that even if we were, let's say, to do an engagement letter with the firm, we need to have an auditing committee approve that before we do that. Jim, that's probably a question for you.
The question is, that's correct.
That's correct.
In order to hire a new accounting firm, you have to go through the process that Mr. Gygoudis is chairing right now.
So I think perhaps we might have to have Mr. Beadle look at the contract and let us know if, in fact, it's expired and if we need to do an engagement letter to continue through this fiscal, through last fiscal year for the audit. Because as my recollection, and I don't have it in front of me, I have looked at it, that it did expire.
Well, I feel that this is an embarrassment, and I would like to make a motion that we stop the search process and disband the auditor selection committee.
And I have some questions. Do you want your motion to wait for a second or?
You normally get a second or not.
I have a motion on the floor to disband. There are no seconds. I have a couple of questions myself. Are you following the RFP that was given to your committee or have you changed it?
We had a question last week, or rather Monday, based on 218.391. We got an RFP based on 2004, the last one that was done. And Brenda had, and I don't know, and that's one question that she, one of several questions that she is going to get this coming week to request where this new draft came from. And we are not changing it substantially. We are just trying to tie into section 218.391, all the elements pertaining to what's in the contract. And additionally, there are blank areas in this template for the specific dates, the process that I just outlined. There are some words that need to be changed. We are looking into some of the statutes as reporting requirements, just to make sure everything's written properly. The qualifications, procedures for the auditor selection, there were some good issues brought up by some of the committee members that need a little more examination. And that's where we're at right now. Dramatic changes, no, because when you follow 218.391, we are looking at all the elements here. I don't think it's, for me, important to, well, it's up to you all if you want me to read the procedures here, but we're trying to tie them in to make sure that we're covering it and then bring it to council and of course, a legal opinion.
Are they blank because those are services that we were not asked to?
No, no, no. These are dates, performance dates.
Okay.
Yes.
Have you changed any of the services?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir. We're not changing services. There was talk and there's a little confusion out, not confusion, but a few questions by some of the committee members, for instance, related to CAFERS, comprehensive annual financial reports. That is a long drawn out and could be a very expensive process. If there are any additional items, for instance, compliance, internal controls that may be suggested by the committee, that would be a side issue that is not our decision. We would just bring it forward to y'all, to everyone to see and decide at that point whether you want them or not. It's not our decision to do any of that. So in other words, we're going with the single audit to meet all the requirements for the federal grants and the CRA requirements, just making sure that we're up to date with what is going on.
Jim, help me out here if you would. They are tasked to have interviews with the candidates and approve the final rankings. Is it up to council to make the final decision or does that board make the final decision, submit that to council for approval?
I haven't looked at the statute in probably six, seven, eight months, but my recollection of the statute is, is that the council is the one that ultimately makes the decision because they're the ones that are going to be entering into the contract. So now how, what the interplay is between how the committee brings their recommendations back, I know that's in the statute, but like I said, I don't remember that off the top of my head right now.
Could you find out for us?
Yes, I can send a memo out.
Okay. And also, could you find out the contract and make, see where we stand?
Because even if we do, like I said, if the contract was, if there's an engagement letter, you still need a committee, an auditing committee, so.
See where we're at.
Yeah, we need to really see where we're at.
Yeah, I think I agree. I think that Jim needs to go to work and bring his side to us without a doubt.
Our job in section three, paragraph E, is rank and recommend in order of preference no fewer than three firms deemed to be the most highly qualified to perform the required services after considering the factors established per pursuit to paragraph A. If fewer than three firms respond to the request for a proposal, the committee shall recommend such firms as it deems to be the most highly qualified. That's what we're doing. So we will bring the scoring and everything to you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council before we open it up? Here are none. Open it up for citizens' comments on this agenda item. Okay, here are none. Bring it back to council. Jim, just get that information for us.
I'll try to do it. It may not be before Christmas, it will be after.
Agenda item number 10, discuss, take action on suggested revision to council policies and procedures presented by councilwoman Deanan. Cheryl.
Yeah, I apologize, I couldn't attend the last meeting, but I, one of the things I think that should be included in the procedure or the policy, I can see chiefs used to write, or provide that, police instead of policy. And let's go backwards to minutes. I think that the minutes need to be presented at the front of the agenda and approved.
It can be either by robit rules.
Can it be either? Okay, because typically it's done beforehand because you're verifying the, I'm just a little concerned about that and also it's now up for discussion. I just think they should be approved ahead of time before we get into the next agenda. And then this really, we'll go back to the first one, really to help staff is that, I know that there's some things that are going to pop up and end up on the agenda, but being a former staff employee, it's very difficult to work in that two week timeframe to get the agendas out to us. And I was hoping we could maybe step it up even two weeks prior to that to set the agenda for the second meeting after that. Am I making sense? Not saying that things can't be added, but if it's nothing pressing, we should have the ability to let them know a month in advance what the next agenda is going to be.
On the agendas, what I've talked to the acting city manager on is that I thought that items that were second readings and new items that were time sensitive were the first priority to be on. And then anything that we need to discuss for future legal or anything like that that needed to be on for first reading, then a couple of new items for each particular meeting. Therefore, the items or the agenda wouldn't be 25 items long. They would be the things that we would need to cover for that time period. So that's kind of how I've been trying to work with Jeff is looking at things that were time sensitive and make sure we had them on. If they weren't, take a few of them each meeting, depending on how sensitive they were. If there's something that, such as not picking on the police, what it means, but.
No, I understand.
The contract that we're okay for right now, that it didn't need to be on immediately, that we would put it on.
Okay, I just, not saying it has to be written into the policy and procedure, but I just, as long as there's a clear understanding, because I feel their pain, I experienced, I've experienced their pain in trying to get these agendas out and they're coming out late on Friday. Can't imagine what it's like here on a Thursday and a Friday. And then of course, you know, time for us to, I mean, I always have the opportunity to go get a pedicure and read the agenda, but you guys, I have a little time here, but you know, I sit and read the agenda, but it affects us too. I work as.
I talked to staff a little bit on it and I saw your seven days prior. And I know right now, they're pretty tight and they have a lot of work to do in a short period of time. And I looked at it as if I get the agenda Friday, that gives them two more days if I don't use the seven days and I use it right now, that I get it Friday. So if I get it Friday, I have Saturday, Sunday, even Monday if I need to. Then I always meet with Jeff on usually Monday and Tuesday if I need to speak to him again to get my questions answered and then I'll be ready for the meeting. I just think right now, seven days, it'd be nice to have a couple extra, but I'm not sure staff, that's going to be good for staff.
Okay, well, we can always revisit it as we get, I just know previously it was a big ordeal and it was very stressful for everybody.
I'm just, I'm trying to work with them when obviously we have a lot of things to cover and trying to pick them in some priority that we need to do first.
Okay.
Is that satisfactory with everybody?
Really no change.
Okay.
So what are we saying?
Well, there's no change, I think. But we do need a motion, right, to accept, do we need a motion to accept the policy changes?
It's already done.
Or don't?
But.
They don't go into effect until now, correct?
No, they were effective.
On the 18th.
But I have a question, if you would go to page four on the new policies and procedures. We made the exception regarding Skype. And my question to the council is, shall we bring this back for a vote next, at our next meeting to just delete the end of that last sentence, starting with the word accept? And just make this a clean policy?
I would have to ask Cheryl, being someone who was sitting on that council and, you know, allowing Skype to be there, do you have any need for?
Not currently, but I don't know if my work situation is going to change.
This is not changing the policy about Skype, it's just deleting what is no longer applicable, which is that grandfathering for one individual.
Okay.
Council member. So, you know, we can't vote on it tonight because it's being presented tonight, but do we want to bring it back to vote to delete that and just clean this up?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay, and then also if you would go to page seven, number seven, the last full line, it says the city manager shall provide the correct information. I would like to insert the words, the city manager or other knowledgeable person shall provide the correct information.
Okay.
So I'll bring those back.
Where was that one again?
Oh, number seven.
Number seven. Last full line. Be okay with that, bring that back.
Okay. Moving on to agenda item number 11, ordinance number 1067.
Ordinance number 1067, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending section 31-4A Satellite Beach Code regarding composition of the Community Redevelopment Agency Board. Amending section 31-7B Satellite Beach Code regarding quorum requirement for Community Redevelopment Agency Board. Creating new sections 31-5 and 31-8 Satellite Beach Code establishing a Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Committee and membership qualifications, composition, terms, quorum rules, and meeting notice requirements. Terminating terms of non-city council members, I should be on, sorry. On current Community Redevelopment Agency Board, providing severability, providing an effective date, that's the first reading of ordinance number 1067.
Thank you. Counsel comments?
Do you want to start?
This is my reason for wanting to reestablish the CRA advisory board. The way is the CRA board is currently structured is really antithetical to the way we do business here normally and traditionally in Satellite Beach. And it excludes a larger opportunity for citizens to participate and advise the council. Every important decision that has ever been made in this city has been made after a citizens' advisory committee was appointed to look into the issue and then make recommendations to the city council. So right now, also the way it is set up, I know that it's allowed by state law, but what we wind up with is two residents serving on that board making decisions about taxes and whatever, and they have absolutely no accountability to the voters. And I don't think that's a good idea either. So I would like to see us go back and this ordinance reflects that, go back to the CRA board consisting of the sitting members of the city council and reestablishing the CRA advisory board.
Well, I asked Jeff, okay Jeff, I was calling chief, to put two sections of Florida statute 163 in front of you. Basically, there's three, three ways in which you could set up a community redevelopment agency. It can be, the city council can act as the community redevelopment agency. It can be the city council plus two, five plus two, which is what we have now. Or it can be, if you look at 163356, it could be residents that are the CRA board. We don't necessarily have to act as the community redevelopment agency as city council. I have no problem with advisory committees whatsoever, but I think in this case, when you're trying to attract businesses into the community and you add another step, it may actually deter businesses into Satellite Beach because now they have an additional step of a process to go through. In other words, a developer and, I work with a lot of developers and construction folks will check to see what the process is before they come into the community. And to give you an example, we had a condominium along A1A that literally had to go to planning and zoning, city council, beautification, and the CRA, I think two months ago. So now you're going to add another step into that process. So, you know, a lot of developers check into this information and find out how difficult the process is and it may actually thwart people from coming into the community. Again, there's three ways you can set up a community redevelopment. I have no problem with it going back to the council minus the two, if that's the wishes. But one thing, if you do have an advisory committee, I think the advisory committee should be made up of stakeholders, property owners and business owners. Right now, the way it's written, it would go back the way it was before and it could just simply be a resident. And I do have an issue with that since they're not, the advisory committee would not be made up of stakeholders. And with that, I'll let you go, we'll talk about it.
I went through this and I have some questions, the way it's written and some, I'd like to recommend that we change. On the second page, under section three of the ordinance, section 31-5A, paragraph, the last sentence in that says the committee may adopt a procedure providing that the two alternate members will rotate as voting members in the absence of a regular member. And my question is, they may do that or what? There's something missing there, so I would like to propose that that last sentence in that paragraph be stricken and the language that I'm passing out here be inserted instead. When a regular member is absent and both alternate members are present at a meeting, the alternates will rotate as the voting member for the duration of the meeting. It just establishes a clean policy that you can understand. This thing also talks about seven to nine members of the advisory committee. I think that we should designate a specific number and frankly, I'd rather see the larger number because it encourages more citizen involvement. So I would recommend that we change, the first sentence is hereby created and shall consist of nine members.
Counsel, on that.
I think that nine is too large. I just think it's too large of a number. Although the statute doesn't regulate advisory committees, I mean, that would be the maximum you would have on a community redevelopment, depending on the size of the community. you would have on a Community Redevelopment, depending on the size of the community.
Isn't that the number we had before, was nine?
If I may, this is essentially verbatim from what was in there before.
Okay, there we go, okay. Nine, just because I want more community involvement. I think there's a lot of smart people out there that can help us, and they can be made up, business people. I think the makeup of it is critical of how we do this. And I think nine is a good number. And let me talk just one thing, if we do this, we had two individuals who were on the committee, and I would like to make sure we, instead of them, put them on. I watched them, they did a really good job, and I would like to make sure we approach them to, to be here as part of a nine.
There's a couple of things too, because I kind of, I get a sense of where this is going, but on page one, the community.
Finish going through what I'm trying to do here first.
Oh, sorry, sorry, you're done.
In the paragraph B, the next paragraph, section 31-5, it says, "Appointees shall serve terms of two years," and I wondered why two? All of our other boards are appointed for three years. And I would recommend that this be consistent with that. It also, in the next sentence, says, "Each committee member shall serve until his or her successor has been appointed and has qualified." And I ask, what does that mean, "and has qualified"? I don't think it means anything.
Again, I just, I didn't get into what was, why it was there, I just put in what was in the code before.
Okay, I looked at this very carefully, and I can't trace that back to anything, so I would strike the words "and has qualified" and just put a period after "has been appointed." Then in paragraph D, in the third line, it says, "Or is engaged in business within the Community Redevelopment area and is otherwise eligible for such appointment." That's the same question, what does that mean? There is no other eligibility cited in here. So I would strike "and is otherwise eligible for such appointment." On the next page, under section four of the ordinance, and it's, decode section 31-8, paragraph D delta, the last sentence, specify that one member, that more than one member of the city council may be in attendance at the meeting and may participate in discussions. This flies in the face, this "and may participate in discussions," flies in the face of the city code regarding council liaisons and our policies and procedures. Advisory boards are supposed to have free rein to come up with their own ideas, not steered or guided by any council members who are present. So I would recommend that we strike "and may participate in discussions." And if we accept that, then section 31-7 delta would need the same change, because that's the same wording regarding the Community Redevelopment Agency. The wording is all the same for those two sections, so if we change it here in 31-8, we would need to change it in 31-7.
Okay. Any other? Public comments, please? Going back to 31-5B, where it says, "Appointees shall serve for two years." I think originally, Lorraine, that was to potentially, I mean, people could be reappointed, but that was potentially to make sure people were there, involved, and if not, we got people there, we wanted the community actively involved. So I think that was originally why that was at two, that was the purpose behind that. So I'm just throwing it out there, I'm not taking. The other thing, on section, on 31-8D, where you talk about may participate in the discussion, so you're saying that if a council person attends, they can't say a word?
If they're asked, but they're not supposed to join in the discussion.
Okay.
Unless they're asked something.
Or, in other words, they're not supposed to try to drive or facilitate the discussion but be a part of, okay, then I'm good with that, okay. Now, back to the other thing that Counselwoman Dean brought up, is there a way that we can, as far as putting people, if we go this route, is there a way that we can look at the makeup of the committee, business people, and that sort of thing? Should we put that actually in here as such, or? I see where she's coming from, it could be all citizens, no business people, and we've got business people that should want to have some input, I mean, so I'm just throwing it back to you.
I think that's relevant for the year.
Okay.
And then, are you ready? Just, this is probably an issue for Jim, on the, on page one, section 1A, it says, "The Community Redevelopment Agency Board is hereby created to consist of five members who shall from time to time serve as members of the city council." But per the Florida statute, it's actually the opposite. And you may want to make sure that's worded properly, because the statute says that we will declare ourselves the agency. So we are declaring ourself actually the Community Redevelopment Agency, so that might want to be reworded, if that's the direction that we want to go.
I understand the distinction.
And you can have, you want to do this?
I don't have a problem.
Jim, make sure your mic.
Thank you. I understand what she's, the point she's making, and I can amend that. I think he can approve it on first reading.
The agency is not serving as the city council, the city council is declaring itself the agency, which is a separate governing entity.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Any other? I have one, like, just, we're going to appoint everybody, and they're going to be fresh, so I think what we need to do is, we're going to have to stagger some of the terms to start. Either that, or we're going to have nine people coming.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Same time.
I would recommend that we send a letter to those who were on the committee when it was disbanded and invite them back. And then, you know, some probably will come, some probably won't.
I would like to open it up to, yes, they can, but I'd also like to be able to open it up to anybody. We might have new people, if we're in the community, new businesses that want to be involved in it, so I'd like to.
Okay, just start all over again?
Yeah, I mean, anybody, and again, if those people find the information, hopefully we get it to everybody.
Okay.
We just take, just as we did for this council. So fill out the forms as we do any other board.
And just a little food for thought, if you're, if this ad hoc committee, or this advisory committee is created, you are now going to be slowing down your redevelopment update, because it's going to have to go to this committee for a recommendation before it comes to us, so, or to the Community Redevelopment Agency. So you're going to be slowing down your process.
In a way, yes, but I have, I have a lot of other questions, reading the information before, that the CRA director would be equal to the city manager. And we're a small city, and with two bosses, I'm not really sure how good that would have worked.
Well, that's a separate topic.
Right, but I'm just saying, that's part of, to me, this whole process. So, let me open it up for citizen comments.
Roger Goodis, resident Satellite Beach in the CRA neighborhood. Originally, I was going to ask for five good reasons, non-political, of why we are changing to this other method, from each council member. Five good reasons. Then I was going to wait and ask for five good reasons combined. And I see where this is going. Please do not vote on this ordinance tonight. You have made several changes in this now, and I think it's unfair to the stakeholders who live in the CRA and/or businesses. They need a chance to read this. We've had issues in the past. You're having nine members up there. I propose that there should be a majority, a mandatory majority of business owners and residents, whatever combination it would be, who actually are stakeholders in the CRA, for who else would look for the best interest of revitalizing the CRA district? And there are projects that citizens who live in the CRA notice more than those on the outside. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Eleanor Montanero, resident. I agree with Counselwoman Dean in as far as slowing up the process. However, I think the board, the CRA Advisory Committee, is a viable link in the process. And if one of them needs to go, it's probably a beautification board. If we're going, if we're forcing developers to go through the beautification board, you know, we had an LDR committee that, that worked the issues of the plant list, you know, you have a building official who's able to articulate what people can do on the property, and, you know, to eliminate the beautification board is probably something that's going to be beneficial to the city and the developers in this process. It's one less meeting that they have to go to and one less entity they have to deal with. As far as the makeup of the board itself, I think you have to be careful about stipulating who and how many, because for those of you who've been around a while, you know, we tried to get a business enhancement committee, we tried to do different things in the past, and you can't always get people to step up, even though they are stakeholders or business holders. So I think you want to keep that open. And as far as the CRA district, everybody in this city uses the beach crossovers, they're all using the sidewalks, so it's not just the people that are stakeholders or live or are business owners in the CRA, it's everybody in the city that has a stake in the CRA. So I would, you know, throw that out there also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? John?
John Ferguson, 135 Maple. I'll parrot what's come before. Each resident of this city is a stakeholder. I live a thousand feet from the CRA, but it's going to influence my home value and everything else. I use the beaches, I use the businesses, so we're all stakeholders. I can appreciate that there might want to be a certain representation. It wouldn't seem fair if every member is not in the CRA, that doesn't seem fair. So, but I'm not sure you guys need to put it in writing, it's just something you have in your mind, however you want to work that. I will suggest a bit of caution on businesses being represented. They need to understand, I believe state law says, if a member of the business is on the CRA, they're not going to be eligible for some grants. Okay? So I don't know how that works, but that's something to think about. And, and if that is the case, then probably a good idea if there's solicitation to let people know that. As far as the business was making it hard for developers, and this is kind of the general topic anyway, but it comes to light here. I haven't looked, and I should have, at the schedule of, the CPAB meeting is the fourth Monday of the month, I don't know when P&amp;Z meets, but it ought to be that if a developer comes in and says, "I need to run something through," there's a logical sequence, and I believe it would be CPAB, not always, but CPAB, then P&amp;Z, then the crack, then the council. And if they're scheduled, they should be just a couple of weeks apart, instead of having to, you know, have a meeting on, let's say, the fourth Monday of the month, and then you have to wait, you know, because, you know what I'm saying, anyway. It would set it off. And the other thing is, I would agree, maybe it's not necessary for beautification to be involved, but if it is, there isn't anything impossible about having parallel. Maybe it's CPAB, and maybe beautification and P&amp;Z need it the same time. Somebody needs to take a look at this as a system, look at the committees as a system, and say, just like you do in software, you make a little flow diagram, and I think you may be able to cut a lot of time off.
Thank you, John. Any other public comment?
You ever check for system, this is a procedural question, and maybe it's done now in the statute, but, and for the agency itself, it says a quorum is three, which makes sense out of five, and it says, "The action may be taken by the agency upon a vote of the majority of the agency members present." That means if you have three present, two can pass it. In our council procedures, you have to have three to pass it, no matter how many are here. So I don't know what the statute says, but I would like, if it's possible, to put it back so that it takes three to make a decision, not two out of the three. You understand? That's on section two of this stuff, and it's 31-7B, and it's actually the top of the second page of the ordinance I'm writing, the one I printed out. So the three members of the quorum, it said, the majority of, and ordinarily, that works for big groups, the majority of who are there, but we only have five, and to me, our charter calls for the council to make decisions based on three, here, there's a three here, that's takes all three, not just two.
You know, I don't, I don't know what this, I'd have to look at the statute.
But if it's the statute, you have to do it that way, but, and my question, if it's not in the statute, I'd like you to consider doing it the other way.
I have a whole statute here.
Further citizens' comments? Hearing none, bring back the council.
I guess the question I have is, do we just not worry about the composition numbers at this point, as to how many businesses are involved and that sort of thing, based on? I mean, I think it's important, but I, if we lock it in, in stone, so to speak, is that going to create problems, as I guess?
Well, it does say residents or someone engaged in a business within the redevelopment district. You know, we, we could say something like, at least one-third of the members, which would be three out of nine, shall be residents or have a business in the district. Or you could just, you know, let it go.
Well, I think, in a way, part of the issue is, that was just brought up, is, if we're going to have problems with businesses because now they're not going to be eligible for grants, is, I mean, I think that's something we need to find out, and if we put that in, then we're going to lock ourselves into that number. And I think what people are saying, and we need to say, we need to make this as diverse as we can throughout the community to get a great redevelopment district. I mean, it's important not just to the people within, though they have a lot at stake because they're in that, but it's important to everybody. So the composition of that board is important, that we look at everything there. And I don't want to leave a business out or make businesses be there, and them not be eligible for a grant if they feel that grant's more important than being on the board.
How would a board affect a grant?
I don't know, I mean.
I don't understand that statement about the grant.
Does anybody have anything they can add to that?
I'm going to elaborate on it.
Yeah, that is true, that if they're, you're on the CRA board, they would not be eligible for grants, and there's an attorney's general opinion I can forward to you.
Grants from the CRA?
Yes.
Okay. Like the facade grants?
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of a deterrent sometimes for them to sit on the board soon.
Thank you.
Like the facade grant or something like that.
Well, I don't think that that's reason for taking that qualifier out, because there'd be some businesses that aren't interested in, you know, in grants, so it would be up to the businesses. I think we should leave that.
The way it is, it's a problem. And we just need to.
And we just need to hit the wood out and form the best board we possibly can.
Okay. Any other motions, Jim?
What I would like to do is make a motion and then go through this to make sure that we're all on board with these modifications that we've made here this evening. So I move that we approve ordinance 1067 on first reading with the following amendments. Housekeeping right there. Yeah, okay. We're done.
Go ahead, I'll jump in later. Go ahead.
At the top of the second page, it's in section 31-7B Bravo. The last sentence should read, "Action may be taken by the agency upon a vote of at least three of the agency commissioners present", striking the words "the majority".
Okay.
We okay with that?
I think we have to look at the law. I would ask Jim to look at the law, the statute on that.
I don't understand.
What she's, what Cheryl's suggesting is is there may be a statute that specifically addresses that action may be taken by a vote of the majority of the agency as opposed to?
Okay, for now, let's go with this, and then you can check on that, and we can change it on second reading if we need to. Okay, then under section 31-5A, the first sentence, the committee is hereby created and shall consist of nine members.
Okay, does anyone agree there?
Are we okay with that? All right, then, at the last sentence in that paragraph, we strike that last sentence and substitute, "When a regular member is absent and both alternate members are present at a meeting, the alternates will rotate as the voting member for the duration of the meeting." Then in paragraph, section 31-5B Bravo, "Appointees shall serve terms of", what do we want, two or three years?
The original intent was two, which seemed to work out pretty well. I mean, that was, but I'll give to that if, but I like the idea.
Cheryl, what would you, Councilman Dean, I'm sorry?
I would stagger.
Well, yeah, that's what I said before. We're going to have to stagger this. We're going to have nine people getting off at the same time.
Yeah.
Place in the line, but that might not be here at this point. Do we want three-year terms, or do we want two? Is that all that you want to hear?
I think it should be consistent with all the rest of the boards.
I'll go with whatever. I just want to tell you what the original intent was, but that's.
And then in the second reading, we can add language about which ones will be staggered, you know, according to, whatever. Are we okay then with three?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
And in the second line of that same paragraph, B, strike the words "and" has qualified. In 31-5D Delta, in the third line, strike the words "and is otherwise eligible for such appointment". On the next page, under section 31-8D Delta, the very end of the bottom line, strike the words "and may participate in discussions". And then that would require amending section 31-7 Delta, because the wording is exactly the same as here, and change that by striking "and may participate in discussions" in section 31-7 Delta.
You need to have that in the title.
What? Yeah, you need to add that. Amending section 31-7 Delta, right.
There you go, it's counterproportional.
That's my motion to approve on first reading with those amendments.
Second? I have a motion by Councilman Gott, a second by Councilman Brymer. Is there any further discussion?
No, I just would like to, Tim, I'll pass that down to Jim about, we're declaring ourself the agency in the first paragraph rather than we'll act as city council sometime.
You'll bring that back to us, Jim. Okay, thank you.
Got it.
Thank you.
Actually, we have nine members, if I may. There's no reason why you really couldn't put in there the staggering of the terms right now and just say, "However, for purpose of the initial appointment, three shall be appointed for one year, three shall be appointed for two years, and three shall be appointed for three years", if your intent is to have nine members.
I amend my motion to include that language in 31-5.
You need a second sentence in B.
Bravo.
I amend my second.
Second sentence. Did you get that, Lenar?
I didn't get the part that you were meaning that.
Yeah, well, you need, you need to get this language.
It's just, it's, "However, for purpose of the initial appointments, three members shall be appointed for one year, three members shall be appointed for two years, and three members shall be appointed for three years."
You got that, Lenar?
And what was the provision, Councilman Dean, on the, the line of?
Section 131-4A.
I'm going to have to come back with what that's going to be. I understand the point that she's making.
Okay.
But, I mean, it's more parroting the statute than really changing what's really ultimately going on.
Hearing no further discussion. Lenar, your poll?
Um, Councilman Dean?
Yes.
Question, Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Jeter?
Yes. Motion passes. We will take a 10-minute break. Councilman? And move on to agenda item number 12, which is proposed agenda for the January 9th. We have the ordinance coming back for the second reading on the CRA. We have the grant writer proposal for the grant writer coming. Okay? Recommendation for the next beach caster. Discussion, make recommendation request, proposal for executive search for permanent city manager. That might or might not, depending on the outcome of some of the agenda items for today. So we'll put a hold on that. Other items?
We need to, I need to address the planning consultant. And we also, right now, the comprehensive plan regarding Pelican Coast area is something about military use. And we need to get ahead of this and not wait until somebody has actually moved forward to do something with those 100 acres. We need to have the comp plan ready for whatever development is going to come in there. So.
Suggestions? Should we do a workshop? It's a big enough item for a workshop?
Well, I think that, yeah. And, yeah. And a workshop with Mr. LaRue.
Okay.
And also, I would invite the CPAB members to be there for that. Because after Mr. LaRue gets the council's input, then he would need to start working with the CPAB to come up with recommended language for amendments to go to Tallahassee for approval. But that really needs to start moving now.
No problem with that. Obviously, a workshop. Do we want to first get a hold of it to see when everybody can meet or give a few days, and then pick it in January? Or do we want to try to pick a night, a day tonight?
A day tonight.
Okay. Okay. We're looking at 15 and 16 that we already have some workshops on. So we're looking, we have a council meeting on the 23rd. Do we want to do it the 21st or 22nd? Either one of those is fine, I think.
I'm going to try the 22nd.
Rest of council?
Okay.
Councilman Dean, is that?
You're, I think you're overlapping some boards. You're going to have to face the bill.
Fine, or make them. What date you have, what's on the 21st?
Code enforcement.
Okay. The 21st is on Monday.
And that's CPAB. What about the 17th, which is a Thursday?
That's okay with me. Just, we're going to be meeting the 15th and the 17th that week. Is that, I have it open. Does everybody else have it open? Be the 17th? On January 17th, Jeff, see if you can have that arranged. Thank you very much. Any other items at this time?
Yeah, hang on just a second. We need to address that on the next agenda for the council. Just the RFP business looking for a planner.
Okay, yeah, I think we had that one. Planning consultant, RFP.
Yeah.
Okay.
Was that on there?
Yeah.
Where are you stood at?
I had written planning until RFP.
Oh, okay. All right, yeah, okay.
There is one issue I, I think we might want to bring up is the forbearance agreement. The repayment back from the, from the general fund to the CRA. Might want to get it out there, just to look at it and to discuss it.
Okay.
What?
The CRA agreement.
The city agreement with the CRA for repayment of funds.
Why is that timely now?
She, she has the right to have it on the agenda. Is that just for us to be, to get up to speed on what that agreement says?
Yeah.
You can just add it. It shouldn't be a long discussion item. Basically, it's just for the information.
Right.
Any, any other?
So what do we, is that for the 9th, or what do we say?
The 9th.
The 9th?
Okay. This is not for the 9th, okay? It's whenever, whenever we get to it. But I had a chance to talk to Mr. Pearson right before the meeting tonight. One of the things that I think that we need to do for purposes of planning our budget and looking forward for how things are going to come out in the next year, is to do a salary survey on our employees. And on our city halls, we've done before. We did one several years ago. So I'd like to ask that the city manager take a look at the process for doing that, the costs, and what we need to do, and just kind of make a proposal so that as we come around near budget time and we know what we're doing, we can make our decisions on what we need to do with our employees and take a look at their reimbursement schedules and that sort of thing. We haven't done it in a long ti, do you know how long it's been? It's been?
Not even, Lenar? When I was last on council.
Yeah. And that's when I just came on. So I know that's the last, that's what I remember as the last time. So I guess what I'm asking Mr. Mayor is for him to kind of gather the process, make some recommendations on how we move that forward, look at the costs of that and that sort of thing. You know, no actions will come out of that other than just, here's how we need to get started with it. So whenever he's ready, I'd like to have it on the agenda. Any other, Councilman? I got to ask you one thing. You're going to be mandated here real soon for the chief on the, for the ticket. Where do we stand there? Is this something we need to put on? Do we have any time leeway here? Are you submitting tickets to the?
The mandate, the way it stands right now is going to be, the mandate, the way it stands right now is going to be that all electronic, all tickets must be submitted electronically January of 2014. So that is the timeline we're looking. We had another RMS presentation. And there's, there's multiple options, but I wouldn't think it's something that needs to be in the next couple of meetings. But if, it really probably should get up there in February, March.
I just want to make sure time-wise, we're, leave ourselves a little room.
I think it's mostly going to be a budget issue for the budget discussion when that comes up.
Hopefully we get a grant writer in there, and maybe something could come up there.
I'd like to have one other. We did hire, I think, a resource position. It's a, I forget, like a temporary something, six-month position to help with the personnel policy handbook. So that's something we need to keep it on top of.
Okay. All right, so that's for now, the agenda items. Okay? Moving on to agenda item number 13. Let me switch folks here, excuse me. Adoption of minutes.
Can, can we hold that till the last item? I have a number of comments on that, and so.
Is that, let's find what the rest of. Councilman Dean, is that okay with you?
Oh, I'm sorry to hear.
The adoption of minutes, move that to the last item.
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, number 14. Important discussion, take action on acting city manager contract between the city and Jeff Pearson. Jim?
Yes, based upon the motion that was made at the last meeting, I prepared an agreement mainly, one of the main reasons why was because the council indicated that wanted to make sure that the retaining agreement, which reflected that the acting city manager's benefits and salary, et cetera, would remain the same as it was when he's a police chief, which is in here. And then also, the other one as far as what happens when the agreement is terminated, Chief Pearson indicated, or then Chief Pearson indicated that he wanted to make sure that, as part of any agreement, that there is a provision that he be immediately reappointed as the police chief. So that's in here as section six. This is basically a takeoff on what was used for the interim city manager's agreement. So it's, if you've seen it before, that's the reason why, to the balance of the provisions.
Any council, any council comments?
I'm going to have a few. Yeah, I, I'll go ahead and bring it up. Again, I brought this up before, and I'll bring it up again. I'm just a little bit concerned about the amount of work the man's going to be putting into this and the level of compensation. So I'm just going to ask, just throw it out there and ask that we consider looking at an appropriate level of compensation to try to cover that. That's the only comment I have at this point.
I was going to suggest that we pay him $2,000 a month in addition to his police chief's salary.
Councilman Dean, any?
And I have a question also, but.
Go ahead, you're on the floor.
On the per diem, it says employee with, providing employee with reimbursement for meals and travel expenses for activities undertaken. Is there a distance? I mean, what if he goes to Long Daughters?
Look, but my recollection is, is that there's either a policy or an ordinance or a statute that talks about how you get reimbursed for per diem. But I can confirm that. That's my recollection. In other words, you have to go out of town, kind of a thing.
Yeah, well, I think that should be in here. Because the way it reads now, if he goes to Long Daughters, it's on us. So.
It is in the policy, that you have to be out of town and not able to.
Okay, then let's just add for activities un, reimbursement for activities undertaken out of town by employee. So, okay. All right, let me get.
Yes, ma'am. Any other comments? Okay, Councilman Brymer?
Not anything else, no.
Councilman Dean? No comment? Jeff, I just want to make sure the agreement, you feel comfortable?
Yes, sir, I just, as the city attorney said, I wanted to make sure that provision was in there. I believe he put it in there and admitted very clear that, that I go back to my. to my position when, when the new person's hired and that was my main concern and, and that's covered and that's, that's fine.
I'll move that we, I'll move that we accept this agreement with the acting city manager with two modifications, that the section three compensation, provision be added for $2,000 per month in addition to his police chief's salary. And then in, that's, that's in section three alpha, in section three B Bravo, per diem, the second line starts travel expenses for activities undertaking, undertaken, insert the words, out of town.
I have a motion by Councilman Gott. Do you have a second?
Yes.
Second. Okay, second by Councilman Breimer. This time I'll open it up for citizen's comments. Hearing no citizens' comments, excuse me, I'll bring it back to council. Counsel, any more comments?
Just, thank, thank you, Jeff.
Okay. You? Hearing none. Lenore?
Councilman Dean? Yes. Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Gott?
Yes.
Mary Dean?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to agenda item number fifteen. And discuss take action to piggyback on the contract with the city of Melbourne for executive search firm to recruit a permanent city manager.
As you can see by the memo, Colin Basinger and Associates have conducted executive searches for city managers in multiple cities in this, in this county. I talked to the city attorney and Mr. Beadle advised that it was perfectly legitimate, common practice and acceptable, I guess, to, to piggyback off another county or another city's contract as long as the parameters were basically the same. Correct me if I misstate our conversation. As long as the parameters were basically the same and the price was the same. I contacted the, the Colin Basinger and Associates and verified that that would be the case, that they would be acceptable to that and that actually their, their price was the same for all of those agencies in this county. They did West Melbourne, Bovard County, Cape Canaveral, Cocoa Beach, Palm Bay and, and some others. And the price had been basically the same for all of those areas for the past several years, in fact. Certainly, the, if in fact that would be the case, the significant difference here is it's gonna save a lot of time and a lot of money for us and speed up the process, which would then put someone in place full-time as, as quickly as possible and hopefully before we get real deep into the budget to, to give that person the ability to get up to speed, I guess, for, for lack of a better word. And I, I just think it would be, I think it makes sense to at least consider that option based on what we're doing. They, they still come in, they still do separate contract with the city, they still interview all the stakeholders and all the things that you see in your package. It's, it's, it's basically just, everybody else has already done the work, they've already put out the RFPs, they've already done the research with these firms, and this particular firm comes up time and time again. And it just seems like we're reinventing the wheel. So that would be my suggestion.
Thank you. Uh, council comments?
Yeah, it's funny how we've come full circle, because I argued that I wanted to do this process months, months ago. And I, I'm very familiar with piggybacking. I really don't have a problem with piggybacking on another municipality's contract. So this is a big decision and I think it's probably in the best interest of the community to do it this way. Although, the committee did do a great job. I knew that ultimately a committee was gonna be formed, so I did the best I could putting someone on there who would, would do the best job she could. And it's not a knock to the committee whatsoever, but I think it's the, the way to go.
Yeah, it's not. And the last time, at the last, me and you were absent, they, the committee spoke and really made it that they would rather have had more time and they felt rushed in this process. I like it because I personally want to see this pushed a little faster than maybe most people because of timing. I would love to see someone in here March one, and I talked to Jeff on this, April one. Obviously, a firm like this has a pretty great memory bank of information on people that they have already interviewed for all those positions. If you read the information that was provided, it's pretty amazing the number of cities that they have done, especially around this area. And the reason I want the timing like this is because I think it's gonna take a couple of months for someone to get up to speed, learn our city. Then we're gonna have, I hope, level of service workshops, which I think is critical for them to be here and learn what every department does. And it's critical for the budget. And then to go through budget process and not have been dropped in here July first and start budget two weeks later. So my hope is that this passes and we expedite the service, because I just think the information is there. They've just done this to many communities right here. So.
I just have one comment since Jeff brought it up. Jeff and I did talk about piggybacking, but the ultimate issue that, we didn't really talk about it that much, but the ultimate issue was, is that our code, and we can get into the discussion about the coverage of the code too, but the, you know, the code provides that the, the council has the ability to go out and do what's proposed if it's less than.
Twenty-two-five.
Twenty-two-five. So that's below that amount. So that was more what I talked to Jeff about was that.
Any other council comments? What, Jeff, what do you see as a realistic timeframe? I mean, just, if this moves forward tonight, kind of lay it out for us, will you?
Well, sir, I can do that, because I, I looked over all these, these documents and it seems that the timeframe is pretty consistent with this company. And it is approximately two months from when they finish with the stakeholder interviews, council interviews, and, and when they have a firm grasp on what exactly is this city is looking for in their new city manager. Then it's about a two-month timeframe, give or take a week. And that seems to be pretty consistent with what I've seen from looking at some of the other documents from other cities that they've done. So I would feel comfortable in saying that depending on how quickly they can meet with stakeholders, city council, it, it appears to be about a two-month, give or take a week or so, that they're saying, here you go, pick someone. That's, that's what I get.
Yeah, I'd like the CEOs to be available pretty fast. I'd like to get this process really going. Any other?
So what would our process be now to, on our next agenda, to have a contract for us to sign with them and then at that time lay out some dates for interviews with the council and that kind of stuff? Does that, would that be?
I don't know. That may be something that's actually, if they could put in a contract, I don't know.
No, you're absolutely right.
Or that you would want to have in the contract. So that's something that Jeff and I would talk about, since obviously. That's something that Jeff and I would talk about, since obviously that's something that, you know, council's already indicated they want in there. So we can put some benchmark times in there and, and see if there's gonna be a problem. And I mean, we can even bring up the fact that we'd like to have somebody in here by, you know, March one or April one or whatever that, you know, around that date anyway and see what their reaction is as far as being able to comply with that timeframe.
Okay, so then the next thing would be on the January ninth, uh, council agenda, to have a contract for us to look at, to sign with them.
Because based on what, when I talked to Jeff, there was, you know, they indicated they could have the contract over to us relatively shortly so that we can start trying to massage whatever we need to massage. So.
Okay, good. Let me open it up. This time I'll open it up for public comment. Josh?
City of Model residents, I do hope that we have in this criteria for our city manager, that they have at least some experience as a city manager. Do y'all have any of the criteria that you know that we're gonna ask them to follow?
Not at this time. I mean, they're gonna meet with us.
Okay.
And obviously, we will tell them what we feel we need for this city.
Yeah, 'cause I think that they definitely need to have some experience in being a city manager.
Okay, thank you.
John Fergus, one thirty-five, Maple. I went through the material that was included in the agenda. Reading what they had for Melbourne, they started in August and said they would be done in November. That's three months. The other thing is that if you're really in a rush and the comment was made, they could get some people work back here real quick. Is there anything to prevent you guys from meeting between Christmas and New Year's if everything was ready? I mean, it'd be a special meeting, what, ten minutes to do your thing? You'd probably save, what, three weeks there? You know, we're, we're talking significant changes here. The other thing to consider, I noticed in their package, they very strongly recommend that whoever the final people to be talked to actually visit the place. And they say, including their wives, you know, wives do play a role usually in decisions made or vice versa. And, yeah, spouses, spouses. But anyway, that this, if we're going to foot the bill, and I presume that's the norm, that's an additional cost you need to think about. That's just something to think about. But again, I'd say go forward as quick as you can.
Thank you.
Game Find Resident, item one, dinner order discusses. Let's not get in a big hurry with this. We are gonna be hard-pressed and the companies are gonna be hard-pressed to find a city manager that we had for twenty-seven years. With sixty council members and four-point-nine approval rating, you're gonna have a heck of a time replacing somebody like that as a statement, an honorable individual and somebody that cooperated with everybody. Number two, I don't think that anybody that's applying for the job, if they cannot show up in person, I don't, I don't think, they should be able to Skype. I don't think they need to, I think they need to show up in person so you can see them, not only hear what they say, but see how they act. Body language is very important when interviewing people and you need to take that into consideration. As far as getting into hurry, please don't do that because I think that we made a great mistake when we placed Michael. Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? Hearing none, bring it back to council.
I would be available the last week of this month.
I'm available the last week of the month until the twenty-eighth. I'm out of town the twenty-eighth through the morning of the second.
How about the twenty-fifth?
I'm there. So I would be available if we could get the contract.
I don't really see what their, their need is to have a meeting over the holidays. It puts staff in a difficult situation. Not difficult, but work for them when they're trying to enjoy two holidays mid, midweek and the ninth is the week after.
What does that do to staff?
We'll do whatever it is that the council decides is the best.
What does that do to staff?
But I, I think that it would be, it would be considered maybe a little aggressive to get the contract and get it to our attorney, have them massage it and go back and forth over the holidays and then be ready for interviews by the end of the month.
I've been known to be aggressive.
I, so, that would be considered, I, I'm not saying it's not possible, but.
Call our next council meeting.
I'm thinking that, I think that might be that we, because don't forget, we have two meetings in January, the very first week in January. So I think by then I would have a much clearer picture of when we can set those interviews, if that's okay.
Well, are they gonna want to interview each of us? Is that?
Oh, absolutely.
So if that, my point with that is if they want to interview me sometime during that week, I'm fine with that. It'll expedite the process. Sure. So anytime after the second of January that you need to go is that we could?
And do they want to meet with us individually or as a, as a board?
I, I can't remember from reading it now what, we can, we can dictate that anyway. We can sign until January anyway, so as soon as January is, we can get the contract signed.
Yeah, so I take that back. It's a moot point. You can't do anything anyhow.
Correct.
All righty. I mean, the motion or this direction is fine.
I think direction's fine, Dave.
Okay.
The contracts then require a super schedule.
All right. Um, going back to the meeting minutes. Mrs. Gott, I'm, excuse me, Councilman Gott.
There are a number of issues. First of all, I'm in the first packet, November twenty-eighth. This was a meeting. This is the meeting that was convened by the prior council. And, you know, when we, when we vote to approve or accept minutes, we are saying that what is in them is correct. And those minutes then become an official record of the council. And, you know, I'm not in a position to say whether or not I think these minutes for the twenty-eighth are correct or not. So on that.
Minutes, or just, excuse me, just the minutes from agenda item seven at six-twenty-three and above.
Oh, I'm not even there yet. I'm in your first packet. There were multiple November twenty-eight minutes.
Okay.
You with me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know, for something like this, I would propose a motion to accept without approval on the minutes for December eighth, which are the next one. In fact, it's probably easier if we deal with these minutes individually as we come to them. I'd make a motion on the November twenty-eighth, twenty-twelve minutes, that we accept them without approval.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion by council, woman Gott, seconded by Councilman Breimer. Hearing none, Lenore?
Okay, Councilman Dean? No, I think they just need to be approved. I don't, I don't see them a big deal. Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Gott?
Yes.
Here it begins.
Yes.
Okay, on December the eighth, I, I have a lot of issues with the way these minutes are being done. On, when we come again to November twenty-eighth, we don't need all of this stuff in the council minutes. This is almost verbatim minutes. And I would, on just at the top of the first paragraph, December eighth, on the last line, it says, "We're unable to attend the meeting." Well, we don't know if they were unable to attend. Mr. Vilman had quit by then, so I would strike "we're unable to attend" and just say, "We're absent." When we come to public comments, we are, in these minutes now, the way they're being done, we are saying what individual citizens said. This, to me, comes to the issue of when I vote to approve minutes, I'm saying that I know that what's in those minutes is correct. I don't know what these folks said. I didn't write it down and I don't remember what they said. And in the past, we have always just listed the names of folks who spoke and addressed the council. And I would suggest that we get back to that. Otherwise, to approve them, I'm gonna have to, we, we would need to be going back and listening to the tapes to see what was said. And it's just, it's just make-work and it's not necessary. Then when we come to, council had the following comments. This is where our comments. Then when we come to council had the following comments, this is where our comments, you should attribute them to whoever the council person was. So we seem to have this reversed. We're told what citizens say during citizen comments, but the comments from the council are not identified with any particular council member. That needs to change. On the back page of that, we have some things in here that are pretty generally stated, again, when it comes to the council, and these things should be more specifically stated. Under, it says, "The council had the following discussion slash comments, a form was provided." I would change that to say, "The city clerk provided a form that could be used." And then it says, "Three questions were requested." That should be, "Councilwoman Dot requested three questions to be added." Then, the third bullet there talks about need to identify the deadline for accepting applications. Again, who is saying this? Which, who on the council is saying this? The way to avoid this kind of minutia is to give more generalized statements in these minutes. I think it's a very good idea to put the time where these agenda items start, because anybody interested in the details will know exactly where to go on the audio to hear what was being said. Otherwise, we just don't need all of this detail. This creates extra work for the city clerk, and it's not helpful. Even things like, well, let's go on down to, "Council had the following discussion," it says, "Councilwoman Dot will review the form and incorporate necessary changes and additions," and it was very clearly stated that I would not be making any changes, I would be looking for additional corrections. My guidance from the council was just corrections, not, you know, do whatever I wanted. And then, "Accept the applications," we decided it was through noon on December the 19th. So, I would have those changes to make on these December 8 minutes.
Lauren, I got to say one thing, it wasn't until noon, it was at 4, to 4 o'clock, closing on it.
Close of business, that's what I remember.
Business day at 4, because I checked with the tape, for the city, for the people applying for council position. It was at the closing, at 4 o'clock, we said. So they have that day to bring it in. I had Lenore check when I got here.
Then me must have some other place at noon, because that's what I wrote in my minutes, but it's okay.
By May, that's what was posted under what? Noon? Yes, I understand that, but the minutes, we listened to the tape.
I didn't get a chance to listen to the very beginning portion. I was going to start the whole meeting, so I apologize, but you've indicated that statement at 6:16 in the evening. And I recollect what the Renée Dot was indicating at noon, so I concur with your statement, but he did indicate 4, you know, close of business. I have to go back and listen to the first segment of that agenda.
Okay, well, then, for the sake of these minutes, leave it the way it is through So, I would move that we accept the minutes of the regular, was this a special or? This was a special council meeting, and that should be in the heading for all minutes indicating whether they're special, regular, or workshop. So, approval of the minutes of the December 8 special council meeting is amended.
Motion by councilwoman Dot?
Second.
Second by councilwoman Brymer.
Just a comment. I mean, I, as far as the detail in these minutes, I agree with it, Maureen, it's got to be a lot of work that could be reduced. I'm not really following how you're saying to reduce it. I mean, I remember the minutes from years ago, they were very concise and very put together, and I think that this is an attempt to really capture everything that moves in the room, and I don't think we need to do that, but I'm not really clear how we would make the direction to...
Well, I was going to...
Based on what you said.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up on the next set of minutes. With the city manager's concurrence, I would like to work with the city clerk to basically do up a template for these minutes. I see all kinds of ways that it can be reduced, and you still get the essence of what occurred.
But this is a lot of work to do at this point.
Yeah, and it's just not necessary, and the more stuff that you put in here, the more we have to remember all the details about what happened in order for us to say that they're correct, and so it doesn't work on either end.
Okay. You got a motion? We have a motion on the floor in a second. Any further discussion? Here are none. Lenore?
Yes. Councilwoman Dot?
Yes. Then going to the minutes that are in the amended packet, regular council meeting on November the 28th. I have a number of issues with this, and what I'm going to ask the council to do is to defer approval of these minutes until our next meeting and give me the opportunity to work with Lenore and winnow this down to the kinds of minutes that we want to be looking at. There's just way too much detail in these minutes. And also, on page, on page 2, right in the middle, it says, "Agenda item number 6, adoption of the minutes for November 28." I don't even know what that's, I don't even understand that. And then on the next page, at the top, on page 3, this is the city council convening as the CRA board. Well, we, those minutes should be in minutes of a CRA meeting, not in the minutes of a city council meeting. And, again, we have the same issue with, we know what every citizen who spoke, we know what they said, or at least it's presented here, but nowhere do we know which council members said what, proposed what. And, so, I would like to, if it's okay with you, to work with the city clerk to redo these minutes in a new format that will be more consistent with what I think that we all want to achieve with these minutes.
Just one thing, and Maureen to bring it up, it is very, very important that the CRA minutes be separate from the city, the city minutes.
Yeah.
And also, if we do go back to convening as a CRA, that the other meeting is stopped and it's done properly, so.
Yeah. Should we have the council on?
Yeah, I think, you know, well, Maureen, thank you for taking that on, and Lenore, thank you for getting ready to work on that. It will make it a lot easier, because this is laborious to read, and I can only imagine what it is to pull it together.
Lot of work.
It's got to wear you down, right? This, so thank you for doing that. I agree with you. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Just one other thing, as for tomorrow night, remember it's 6 o'clock, not 7. And we had, I believe, seven applicants turn in, and I accepted one turned in at 3:20. The reason that, I was definitely under pressure that, we looked at it, we said to close the business day, and it was one, so we accepted all of the applications, there was seven. We'll start tomorrow, have six on that.
Any further business? As far as the procedures go on that for tomorrow night, what, how are we going to operate with that? Are we going to bring one in at a time? Is that, what do you...
Yeah, I think that's the way we should do it, one person at a time.
And these are...
And the other people can wait in the waiting area, Jeff will set up, so.
And these are open-ended questions and format and that sort of thing?
Exactly.
So it's one person gets a half an hour and the other one gets an hour? That's just the way it works?
Whatever we feel necessary to ask them questions. Some people...
And we don't necessarily need to ask the same questions.
We don't have to ask, it's not mandated that you ask the exact same questions to everybody.
Because some questions won't fit everybody.
Exactly. I checked that out with Mr. Beadle, just to make sure that we were all on the right page, and yes, you can ask the questions need be for that applicant.
Jeff? Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I just had a question. Would it be acceptable to have the candidates list of the order in which they will be interviewed? And the reason I bring that up is, if it happens to be that you're the seventh person, then you don't want to get here necessarily at 6 o'clock and sit in the hallway for three hours. You might adjust your time a little bit. Maybe not, maybe they all want to come and sit here for three hours, but would that be acceptable?
Alphabetically or time-in, what is more convenient?
I don't think I make a difference, but I just think you'd like to know if you were one or seven.
Alphabetically, okay.
Alphabetically?
Alphabetically.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any further business? Here are none, me and the drone, 6 o'clock tomorrow.